Your current meeting of the Silver City Town Council for your please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and if I could ask Councilor Maronis to read our mission statement.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Silver City is the hub of an inclusive community settled within a small town that through guided growth honors and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage, while facilitating jobs, health, and education resources such that the residents and visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area and high quality of life.
Thank you very much. And I didn't get this on the agenda, but I have a special presentation to make. And I think many of you already know that this last semester I had worked with Aldo Leopold, and in doing so, they selected a very fine student to work with me. And for this last semester, Malagre Coats and I have worked together. We've... she's been giving out packets as we prepared for our meetings. She's gone through them, she's provided her comments and talking points and input that help guide my comments and my concerns. And it's been truly an honor to work with her. And at this point, if I could get you to join me at the podium. I would like to present you with a certificate. It states the mayor of the town of Silver City acknowledges and recognizes Malagre Coats for her accomplishments and exceptional work as an intern with Mayor Marshall through the Aldo Leopold High School internship program during the past semester of 2011. Thank you, it's been very rewarding for me.
Thank you very much.
Just to add a little bit to that, I've had discussions for many years about developing a student town council. And Malagre and I had discussed it sometime last year. And she did a bunch of research, looked at different models around the world. And she designed the program that we're starting to implement now. She wrote up the first agenda, she did the recruiting and got some kids to come out on a Saturday and spend pretty much a whole day with me. And discuss what the council does, what our functions are, um, how do you go about analyzing issues to develop good quality policy? And a lot of that work came from Malagre and the work that she did in the last semester. And I think that'll be reflected for years to come. And hopefully, we will develop some wonderful future town councils from our efforts. And we have one of them that spent Saturday with me is sitting out here. Wait about it. So, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public conference. Remind you I have five minutes to speak if you're looking at me, and I will try to give you a one-minute warning. And Dr. Dr. Martinez. Thank you, sir. Well, that just threw me off. Next item on the agenda, the council chairman, Councilor Betterson, would you like to start?
I just want to wish everyone a happy new year. I know it's a little bit late, but it is our first meeting of the new year. And that's about, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you. Um, Matt Raffo, um, the town chairman, Robert Scavone, um, and he recommended for animal ordinance, uh, the Los Santos file. Um, and so I'm thinking of doing that. Um, we're gonna, uh, I'm hoping to nominate the two main topics, main concerns. One is that the new ordinance is gonna have to address, um, the root causes for animal-related expenses, expenditures. Um, we see that with the number of animals that are being euthanized, the number of complaints about parking, uh, so. We have to address the root causes here. We know from other, uh, we know from other communities that, um, dog complaints tend to be density dependent. So as our municipality ages, those numbers decline slowly. Um, and we know the fact is independent of enforcement. We can use that information to reduce the number of dogs. And I hope that the animal ordinance does that. The second, um, main concern that I have is that, uh, it's got, well, it's got dog protections, um, from having a repeat of the whole chicken incident. That was, uh, that was an embarrassment, um, for the town. As a minor concern, so hopefully, uh, the animal ordinance will, uh, we're gonna be doing a recession on the floor and seeing what comes our way. Uh, the other thing is, uh, there's a town that has a community watching land. So if anybody's gonna ask you to do that, make sure you contact me.
Thank you. Councilor Rick? Happy New Year to everybody. Um, Councilor Maronis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to say happy new year to everybody, all our citizens that have shown up here and to those who are watching on cats. I'd also like to, uh, say happy birthday to the state of New Mexico for, uh, finishing our 100th year, um, as a state. And also something that, uh, you know, Dr. Martinez comes here a lot and I never think to mention the fact that he was, uh, my professor in political science and a huge influence and motivate, motivator for me to participate in government. And I just want to give him credit for influencing my decisions to actively participate in our political system. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, a couple of things. One, I tried to get a centennial event at the Circo on Friday night. And it was great to see the kids and young people come out and celebrate the centennial of the state. As well as, it was great to get out and see everybody out downtown on Friday night. And I always knew this, and I have to apologize, um, Councilor Betterson was in attendance with me. And once again, I failed to acknowledge her at the time. So I apologize for that. I get very nervous in front of people. I don't want to turn my comments into a theme here, but I've got a couple of things that I want to discuss. One is I received a call from Mayor Bloomberg's office. He, Mayor Bloomberg being the mayor of New York City. And he is leading a coalition of mayors against illegal guns. And there's about nine guiding principles that they're pushing for to ensure that illegal guns are not in the wrong hands. And they asked the town of Silver City if we would sign onto that coalition. I own guns, I'm not anti-gun, and I am anti-illegal guns. And I think looking at their principles, and I will make those available if anybody would like to see them. That it allows for better control at the local level. This coalition pushes for better information to our local law enforcement and allowing them to access and communicate with those that have the authority by current statutes. And hopefully, we can develop rules that assist us in getting illegal guns off the streets and out of the hands. So I will consider, unless I hear any strong opposition to that, I will consider signing on for Silver City. That being said, I said I don't want to turn this into a theme, but this is number two on a similar topic. I have a brief comment on an issue that has been raised to me by a concerned citizen. At a recent council meeting here in this building, a citizen noticed that a fellow member of the public was seated near him with an exposed firearm on his hip. This encounter made him uncomfortable to the extent that he now feels somewhat inhibited from attending these public meetings in the future. I have given due consideration to his concerns and have concluded that I, as mayor, have certain obligations to those who attend these public meetings. By law, I am charged with the duty of maintaining the decorum of these council meetings, as well as fostering an atmosphere where participants, observers, can feel comfortable in their security. To those ends, I find that the carrying of deadly weapons by other than public safety officials is detrimental to the decorum of these meetings over which I preside. Therefore, from the next meeting of this city council and onward, no firearm to any sort will be permitted within the forelaws of this meeting when council is conducting its business. And I ask for your understanding and cooperation. I want absolutely no reason for anybody to feel intimidated or apprehensive about attending and participating in their government. And it's, like I said before, I'm not against guns. I think there's a time and a place for them, and this is not the place. So, and with that, I will move on. Anybody need round two? Any changes to the agenda? Oh, wait. I wanted to announce and ask me to announce something before I move on. We have several openings on boards, advisory boards and commissions for the town. And we have been advertising and advertising and we're spending a whole lot more money on advertising than we're getting results. So we have an opening for an alternate on the Grand County Silver City Extra Territorial Subdivision Commission. I believe we've been advertising since January thirteenth of 2009. We have one opening and no applicants for the mayor's climate protection agreement Citizens Advisory Committee. We have two openings on the museum board. We have... It looks like the entire incentive review committee needs to be appointed. Great. The cemetery board has four positions. Planning and zoning commission has one position. And recycling advisory board has one opening. So it will be very, very helpful if we could get some volunteers. And these are really important committees. This council has the authority and continues to truly listen to and value the advisory panels that we have. And we need people to sign up for them and advise them. And there's no age limit, there's no, you don't have to be a registered voter on most of them. I think the PMV, you probably do, it's a commission. But I encourage people to apply for those and make sure that we are getting the advice that we need to make our decisions. And did you want to... And yeah, and under new business, item B, approval disapproval of regulation 2012-02 is not ready. So we will strike that from the agenda. Any other changes to the agenda? Next on the agenda is a three-year minute for the regular meeting, December 13th, 2011, for the town council.
Mr. Mayor. I'm not that I oppose the regular minutes of the town, I'm sorry, the minutes of the regular meeting of the town council, December 13th, 2011, as presented, uh, this evening.
I can't hear that motion. There's a motion of second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the town council from December 13th, 2011. Any discussion? There's a motion of second, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Reports. Mr. Brown, do you have any reports?
No.
No, my back, I'm bouncing.
That's it?
You want... I prefer the original story with the second pass. Chief, do you have any report?
Uh, just to kind of update you, I've got information on most of the statistical information for 2011. I've actually got, uh, not so good about the city of New Mexico. I would like to kind of clean it, which is actually, the worst action is this part, I'm not, uh, in the city, you know, I mean, pretty much kind of the city council, but let the next, uh, chance later, if you have a question, be happy to answer.
Thank you. Ann, did you want to...
I do, thank you. Today is a crowded filing day, so I wanted to announce the individuals that filed, and I have certified these individuals. The mayor, it's James R. Marshall. District two is Pauline Anne Hessler Cook. District three is Jose A. Ray Jr. and Thomas W. Joy. District four is Michael Shawn Maronis. I also wanted to say that next June, April 17th, is another filing day, but it's for the write-in candidate. So if someone missed the opportunity today, they still have one more day they could file, but it would be as a write-in, and their name would not be on the ballot. I've got some other election information I'd like to provide to the public. I just wanted to remind the voters that the town council did read district last November, so they should check their district map to determine if their district map's changed. Also, if, uh, they need to make sure their voter registration is correct, if their name has changed or their address has changed. They need to make those corrections with the county clerk before the deadline of February 7th to vote, uh, you know, to have them ready to act for election on March 6th. And option two voting starts at City Hall on January 31st. And they can vote on the machine at City Hall on February 15th until March 2nd, and then election day is March 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff reports? Anything from the legal department? Did you have any that I...
No, everything is just ready.
Good, I thought you had the draft in order. Next on the agenda is a public hearing entitled approval disapproval of ordinance number 1193. An ordinance for a map amendment zone change request number ZC 11-05, from commercial to mixed use for property described as the lot seven of block 227 of the Fraser Edition, an address as 1113 North Bennett Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is David Harkasitas. The town council will serve as the hearing board and as mayor will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had expressly discussion with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing or had any communication from any party to this case?
No.
Seeing then, you have qualified the participants. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including both staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise, come to the podium to be turned in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Say your name.
I, say your name.
I, say your name.
Do you follow the square or a firm?
Do you follow the square or a firm?
That's a testimony I'm about to give.
That's a testimony I'm about to give.
In the matter reported, council?
In the matter reported, council?
Is the truth the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Is the truth the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staffs will present every synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken by the director, by PMV commission, or by town staff. Then the applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of the applicant's case. The applicant, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if he concludes his case in chief and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness. Such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record? And then we will ask the council if they're ready to make a decision. So we'll start with a staff's report. Go ahead.
This is a request for a map amendment zone change from commercial to mixed use district. The location is 1113 Bennett Street, Silver City. The applicant is David Harkasitas owner, and he is represented tonight by Judy Ward. The applicant is the owner of property located at 1113 Bennett Street. The property contains the seven of block 227 of the Fraser's survey. The block is currently zoned commercial, a zone intended to accommodate a mix of commercial uses. However, the neighborhood actually consists of a mix of commercial and residential uses. In addition to the dairy cleaning close proximity, the block, a barber shop across the street, and other commercial properties in the area, there are three residences beyond the applicant's house on Bennett Street. With the adoption of the new land use and zoning code of 2010, a new zoning designation was created, the mixed use district. This classification is intended to accommodate a mix of small sale commercials and residential uses and to provide a transition between commercial and surrounding residential neighborhoods. It is likely that this block will be included in a new zoning designation when the new maps are drawn. The applicant originally requested the zoning be changed to residential fee, but did not object to the new designation of mixed use. The main reason for this zone change request is that the properties zoned commercial have a higher mortgage interest rate than those zoned residential. This makes it housing to buy, sell, or refinance the property, even though the actual use of the property is residential. Another hardship for property owners in this situation is that residential uses are considered non-conforming in a commercial zone. Non-conforming uses have a number of restrictions, including the inability to expand, extend, or enlarge structures by more than 25% or to rebuild a residence that was destroyed by some calamity after one year. The new zoning designation will eliminate those restrictions. On December 6th, 2011, the planning and zoning commission held a public hearing during their regular meeting to hear this request. The commission reviewed the application, deed, site plan, staff report, and other supporting documentation along with sworn testimony given at the public hearing. The commission found that the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. And further, the proposed amendment responds to changed conditions such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use, or others for further studies that have been completed since adoption of the land use code. These findings fulfill the requirements stated in section 6.3.2 of the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010. Do you want to read all the findings? Or would you recommend them?
It's not necessary. It's just part of the record already.
Okay. Um, anyway, the town council will apply and make relevant a minimum one of the sudden findings to the request at hand. The planning and zoning commission recommends approval of map amendment zone change request, ZC 1105, changing the parcel at 1113 Bennett Street from commercial to mixed use, and there are no conditions recommended. I just want to point out, this includes subject properties with zone maps showing that it is in the middle of a commercial zone that's very close to residences that are associated with it. The other house is beyond Mr. Harkasitas' house, at the barber shop directly to the street. And you can barely see the dairy cleaning sign that's green basket over there. So there's definitely a mix of commercial and residential usage. You have any questions?
Any questions from the... Mr. Ward, would you like to present the applicant's case?
I would, thank you. My name is Judy Ward, I'm a Realtor with Smith Real Estate. I represent Mr. Harkasitas, who is hoping to sell that property. As Luann stated, the current zoning really prohibits him from selling it again as a house. And Mr. Harkasitas lives in Albuquerque, and he was unable to come tonight, and that's why he asked me to represent him. As Luann stated, the findings of the PMV all cover the reason that he wishes to change the zoning. It will make it easier to sell, of course, and we would request permission of the council to change that zoning. Do you have any questions of me?
Any questions? Do you...
That concludes my case.
Are there any witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case? Seeing then, is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record that you didn't think of two seconds ago?
No, but I'd like to take a moment of personal courtesy and tell you how good it is to be here again and see my friends, and I love them, they're friends too, that's great. I know the county deserves the thanks probably, but maybe you approached them a little bit. Yes, it's beautiful, and I'm glad to be back.
Thanks, Judy. Does any member of the hearing board have any questions for any witness? Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application or render its decision? I'm going to take the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Maronis?
I'm now for approval of ordinance numbers 1193 and ordinance for a map amendment zone change request, ZZZC 11-05, from commercial to mixed use for property described as the lot seven of block 227 of the Fraser's Edition, and it addressed as 1113 North Bennett Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is David Harkasitas. And under the findings, um, number seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code.
Mr. Mayor, a second for motion statement.
There's a motion of second to approve ordinance number 1193. As read, is there any other discussion? There's a motion of second to approve ordinance number 1193 and ordinance for a map amendment zone change request, ZC 11-05, from commercial to mixed use for property described as the lot seven of block 227 of the Fraser's Edition, an address as 1113 North Bennett Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is David Harkasitas, and the finding is number seven. And they're being held for their discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilor Maronis?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Thompson?
Aye.
Motion carries, and I conclude this hearing. Next on the agenda is a public hearing entitled approval disapproval of ordinance number 1194 and ordinance for a map amendment zone change request, ZC 11-04, from commercial to mixed use for property described as lot two, block 268 of the Fraser's Edition, and an address as 1400 North Corbin Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is Jeffrey Reese.
I'd have experte discussion, but Jeffrey is my best party. He's that.
As long as you have not discussed this hearing, and you're confident in stating that, you should, you're qualified. Anybody else?
No.
I say now for you to be qualified. Will our parties and witnesses intending to testify, including their staff members, who intend to present testimony, or who will be available for questioning, please rise, come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Hi Luann Mitchell?
Do you follow my square or firm?
Do you follow my square or firm? That's the testimony I am about to give.
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council?
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
And the penalty of perjury?
The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present every synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken by the director, by PMZ Commission, or by town staff. Then the applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of applicant's case. The applicant, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record? And then we will go to the council, the hearing board. Go ahead.
Excuse me if I sound like I'm repeating myself, but these two cases are on the records as stated. This is a map on request for a map amendment zone change from commercial to mixed use district. The location is fourteen hundred North Corbin Street, Silver City. The applicant is Jeffrey, the owner. The applicant is the owner of property located at fourteen hundred North Corbin Street. The property encompasses lot two of block two sixty-eight of the Fraser's survey. The block is currently zoned commercial, a zone intended to accommodate a mix of commercial uses. However, the neighborhood actually consists of a mix of commercial and residential uses, primarily residential, with two other residences across Corbin from the applicant's house. With the adoption of the new land use and zoning code of two thousand and ten, a new zoning designation was created, the small scale, the mixed use district. This classification is intended to accommodate a mix of small scale, commercial, and residential uses, and to provide a transition between commercial and surrounding residential neighborhoods. It is likely that this block will be included in the new zoning designation when the new maps are drawn. The main reason for this zone change request is that properties zoned commercial have a higher mortgage interest rate than those zoned residential. This makes it housing to buy, sell, or refinance the property, even though the actual use of the property is residential. Another hardship for property owners in this situation is that residential uses are considered nonconforming in a commercial zone. Nonconforming uses have a number of restrictions, including the inability to expand, extend, or enlarge structures by more than twenty-five percent, or to rebuild a residence that was destroyed by some calamity after one year. The new zone designation will eliminate those restrictions. The applicant originally requested the zoning be changed to residential B, but did not object to the new designation of mixed use. The code enforcement, police, public works, utilities, meters, and fire departments have reviewed the application and the file and expressed no concern. On December sixth, two thousand and eleven, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing during their regular meeting to hear this request. The commission reviewed the application, deed, site plan, staff report, and other supporting documentation, documentation, along with sworn testimony given at the public hearing. The commission found that the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. Further, the proposed amendment responds to changed conditions, such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use, or further studies that have been completed since adoption of the land use code. These findings fulfill the requirements stated in section six point three point two of the Land Use and Zoning Code of two thousand and ten. The Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm sorry, the town council will apply and make relevant at minimum one of the following findings, of which there are seven. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of map amendment zone change request ZZC eleven oh four, changing the parcel at fourteen hundred North Corbin Street from commercial to mixed use, and there are no conditions recommended. Again, this is a residence that is directly across from the subject property on Corbin Street, another residence across the street, and further down Corbin is pretty much, pretty much all residential. This is the vacant lot next to the subject property, with two little dogs running around. And here's the zoning map showing fourteen hundred Corbin Street in the middle of the commercial zone. This is the subject property.
Thank you. Mr. Reese, would you like to present your case?
Thank you. My name is Jeffrey Reese, and I'm the owner of the subject lot. And as Luann previously stated, that area is primarily residential and a good candidate for this particular zone change. Not just my lot, but that entire area. So it meets not only one, but most of the criteria required for the zone change. And so I'm just asking for you to consider the zone change and have it carried forward. Thank you.
Can we turn the lights back on? Must be getting old, I can't read. Is there anything else that you wish to be reflected in the record? Any other witnesses in support of the application? Any witnesses in opposition to the applicant, application, of the applicant? Seeing none? Have to ask you again, it seems repetitive, but is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record at this point? Does any member of the hearing board have any questions for any witness? Seeing none, is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
You entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number eleven ninety-four, an ordinance for a map amendment zone change request ZZC eleven oh four, from commercial to mixed use for a property described as Lot Two, Block Two Sixty-eight of the Fraser's Addition, and addressed as fourteen hundred North Corbin Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is Jeffrey Reese. With the findings number seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion, a second, to approve ordinance number eleven ninety-four. Is there any discussion? There's a motion, a second, no further discussion, to approve ordinance number eleven ninety-four, an ordinance for a map amendment zone change request, number ZZC eleven oh four, from commercial to mixed use for a property described as Lot Two, Block Two Sixty-eight of the Fraser's Addition, and addressed as fourteen hundred North Corbin Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is Jeffrey Reese, and that was finding number seven again. Yes, sir. And roll call, please.
Councilor Morris?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Thompson?
Aye.
Councilor Beddington?
Aye.
Motion carries, and I conclude this hearing. Councilor Morris?
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section ten dash fifteen dash one eight, for the following reasons. Number eight, meetings for the discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights by the public body.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion, a second, to go into executive session pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section ten fifteen one eight, for the following reasons. Number eight, meetings for the discussion of the purchase, acquisition, or disposal of real property or water rights by the public body. Would you consider adding a short recess prior to that?
Yes.
So the motion is, we have an addition on the front of the motion to go into short recess before we go into executive session. Roll call.
Councilor Morris?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Thompson?
Aye.
Councilor Beddington?
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll be in recess, and we're going to executive. We called this meeting back into open session, and there was nothing discussed in the executive session, and was not mentioned in the motion, and there was no decisions made within executive session. The next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of ordinance number eleven ninety-two, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the county service study in New Mexico grocery receipts tax improvement bond. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor, this ordinance, we were here in December just for a notice of meeting that is subsequently run in the paper. Thanks to Ann, had that run on December fifteenth for the meeting tonight for a public hearing in consideration of ordinance eleven ninety-two, which is the bond ordinance for potential financing for some capital improvements, which we've all been discussing. In short, what the ordinance does, it authorizes debt of up to one million dollars, with the final term, final principal amount, interest rates, maturities, and who the purchaser will be determined in a subsequent resolution in the next month or whenever it's ready. And I think talking to Mr. Valance Wayland with your schedule, we'd be looking at a month to six weeks to come back. He's currently soliciting input from potential lenders to get the best possible terms for the town, should you all decide to move forward on this. It instructs similarly to the two thousand and eleven bonds, which you all issued last year, in the sense that it has two revenue streams that are pledged toward repayment. One, the state share gross receipts tax, which of course is your primary revenue stream for the city government. And two, an increment of municipal gross receipts tax. It's a different increment that was pledged in two thousand and eleven. The way it's set up is, the intention is that this increment of municipal gross receipts tax will be used to pay the debt service, the state shares simply in the pledge to strengthen the credit and lower your borrowing costs, similar to the two thousand and eleven bond. The increment of municipal gross receipts tax is a quarter percent. There is a typo in the title, I just went, the document itself is correct, it references a quarter percent throughout, but the title has an eight percent, that just needs to be amended on the fly here to say a quarter percent. The project, the mayor will highlight what you're looking at here in just a second, in the, in the terms of this ordinance, it's defined broadly, consistent with statute and the ordinance that imposed on the municipal gross receipts tax. The covenants in this document are identical to the covenants that were in your two thousand and eleven bond, because the state share gross receipts tax is pledged to both, should you decide to go forward with this. It doesn't put any additional responsibilities on the town in terms of recording or other requirements that you are, or not, that you already are complying with. It simply has additional, a different pledge in this municipal gross receipts tax. I'm happy to answer any questions about it. This, from a technical standpoint, this is a significant step, should you decide to move forward, but it does not preclude changing your mind prior to the sale resolution. This authorizes the debt, will provide notice should you adopt it, and then it will give us comfortable and forcey to negotiate with potential lenders for the best possible terms. But then we will come back to you to get your approval on in a subsequent resolution for closing then. Happy to have that. Happy to answer your questions about the mechanics. With one thing, real quick, this is different in a one very substantial way versus the two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and eleven, that was public marketing, so we had offering documents, and it went to the public markets, and we underwrote that and bid that way. This is a, going to be a private placement, and so you're only dealing with sophisticated investors, banks, maybe the finance authority, or other lenders that are sophisticated in this, so you don't have the same disclosure documents that you would in that first one. So that's a significant difference. Your tax requirements and your statutory requirements, you have to comply with the same thing, but your SEC requirements are substantially different. Much less.
Councilor Beddington?
Actually, it's not for you, it's actually for Mr. Brown. If you could please explain, give everyone about the quarter percent gross receipts tax that we're being paid, the loan back, and where it's coming from, and how it's not a new tax, or a re-trafficing, basically.
The town, the local government, the state, the county, the county's, because six point three, six, quarter percent municipal gross receipts tax, helps the town to have ten years old, uh, time. This is dedicated to the state's increment, as the name is.
It was adopted in nineteen eighty-one.
It was adopted in nineteen eighty-one. So basically, we're, uh, due to, of course, the government's, to, to, the state share portion of, of that first increment, so it is not a new tax. The price from the savings that we are going to be realizing, um, uh, being able to, uh, purchase gas, fuel, at a much cheaper price, is going to be used to asset, uh, the payments, as well as the, probably the side last, the side savings that we, that we stopped during the last, um, uh, bond issuance.
And this is related, uh, without, in the two thousand and eleven bond, as far as it was free, I think, there were many, several, and they get to outstanding, that refunding is resulting in the next several years, a more amount of debt for the, you're paying on those, on that chat, which is down before the two thousand and eleven bond, and that's the, the, Mr. Brown was talking about. And I'm, I think, I think a very important thing, these are special limited obligations of the town, they are not general obligations of the town. That means that whoever lends you the money, should there, it can only afford to recourse payment, the local state share gross receipts tax, and it's one in the municipal gross receipts tax. You are not pledging any, for, issue out in place, you're not pledging any infrastructure gross receipts tax, capital loan aid gross receipts tax, apartment closes gross receipts tax, any property taxes, none of that is on the table for this stuff. You are very, uh, pinpointing, this one municipal gross receipts tax is primarily a way to repay this, and the state share is serving as a way that we should, uh, to give it a response table by adding that back to that.
Thank you, I just want to make sure it's real clear that we have not, we stopped this six one, we have not, this is one of the five, it's the first one, so it was done in nineteen eighty-one, it was about this, it's not new, we're currently paying, or we go purchase something.
Yeah, that's right, from that point, we're using the three bucks to begin. Like you said, because we don't use, uh, probably, certainly, there's going to be comments on operating figures because of the lost vehicle, and we use the four finger as part of the, uh, basic operating function for the town, so that's why we focus more on that than we did on, on any other option, or, and, uh, we're looking at a, a six-year term, which basically, at the point that we meet by then, uh, it's burnt out six years. Sixteen in that window, so we're, we're still looking back seeing this period.
Some of the municipal debt, you can go out, shockingly, when you make up the fifteen minutes, so a six-year term is a very, by any common standard, is a very short term. You know, the shorter terms are just like, you see, and what does that have a short life? You might see three or four years debt. But a six-year debt for capital improvements, which are going to be, you know, power improvements of structures and things of that nature, is extremely short. So, I mean, that's another positive, that your interest cost would be substantially lower by not going out longer than that.
Thanks, thank you both.
Questions? Anything else? The, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. There's been three projects that have been on the table, and we've been in, in negotiations with over the last several months. The, all of them have set within different plans within the town. The first project that I'll discuss is the block where the current Shamrock and the drive-up banks of Lincoln America sits, the town owns the entire block with exception of the corner
The, all of them have set within different plans within the town. The first project that I'll discuss is the block where the current Shamrock and the drive-up banks for Link of America sits, the town owns the entire block with exception of the corner that the Shamrock sits on. There's been plans in the town for many, many years, long before I was around, to develop a municipal complex around Golf Park and, um, have consolidate city offices and functions in that area. To do that, we need to acquire the Shamrock lot, and it's currently available and we've been in negotiations and we currently have a, a contract with them. In the short term, as we all know, we don't have enough money to build City Hall right now, which would be millions and millions of dollars. The short term would be that we could actually utilize that asset to service our, our local government vehicles for fuel and fill up all of our city vehicles and some other local government vehicles with fuel at reduced rate because we would be the dealer at that point. So we would be dodging off the rack instead of being, having a middleman in the middle. And that's some of the savings that, that Alex referred to just a few minutes ago when he was discussing it. And then in the long term, the Shamrock would disappear and we would complete the, the plan for a municipal complex there. The next project that has been discussed is the purchase of a Silco theater. And the theater has been a part of the Main Street program for many, many years. They have put several thousands of dollars worth of investment into it. There is a grand opportunity right now that, that we purchase the theater and work to develop it, work to enhance its ability as an asset to support Main Street and increase our business down there, increase the activity down there, and right now we have an, an opportunity to do that. The third project is, as many of you are probably aware, we're doing some work on College Street. College Street has a pretty important feature that it leads right up to the college and is part of the Arts and Culture District. It's a, a good avenue to get through to the college. It's also important that we develop that street in a manner that, that makes it inviting for the college students to come downtown and to be able to walk downtown and enhance the, the vitality of our downtown. So really, the, the Silco and, and College Street improvements are, besides some obvious reasons that the street's a hundred years old and, and needs repaired, there's, it's truly to be considered a Main Street project as well. We've, we're currently going through and replacing water sewer and the phone companies done their work underneath the street, so we shouldn't have to tear it up after we put down the pavement. Where we're at right now is three projects. We do not intend to, to borrow the entire million dollars that this ordinance would We don't have enough funding in there to, to do, uh, three of the projects, so we have been exploring lots of different options to find the best funding source to complete the three projects. The, if this is carried out, most likely the Shamrock would be under the bond. The other two projects, we're going to continue to look for the best funding option to pursue those and add those to the, the assets of the town. I also forgot to mention on, on College Street, we would take it up to Cooper Street, from Pope to Cooper, and that allows, besides the usual usage of the street, um, it's part of the criteria for the tour of the hill, and having a, a nice safe corner that they come flying around is very advantageous to that race. So there's, there's just multiple uses and benefits to, to all the projects, and this is one of the funding options that we have, and we've been known in the past and will continue to, to seek some creative and innovative funding to ensure the best expenditure of, of the public funds. And with that, is there any comments from the audience? This will be Dr. Martinez, and this, this is not our final action tonight, so it will come back if you want to proceed.
Yes, I understand, understand what you are saying there. And, uh, thank you very much for allowing me to, uh, come to sound, and, uh, good evening to all of the others who are here today and those who are here. I have thought that in many areas of development, uh, this is all very difficult to understand. I admit it, this is all very, very difficult for us to understand. I'm saying us, a lot of folks tell me they don't quite understand what is taking place here. Sorry, but it's, it's the truth. It's never very difficult. Yes, maybe not a new tax, but it appears to be an increment on an existing tax, and, and all these sorts of things are complicated. And, uh, I, uh, for tonight, we, we say that, uh, there are many things that are disturbing to many folks. For example, I think of the hundred seventy-five thousand dollars that consultants are going to get, uh, from some aspect of, of all of this. And, uh, the Christmas tree of the capital improvements is very difficult to, uh, set aside for, uh, many folks, because I'm not trying to work to know, obviously, you're not up to some very strengths, and I'm not trying to improve for children and, uh, and, uh, of course, these are the things, that when I see a child casually sometimes, I'm not saying we're doing it, but tonight, but check when sometimes you're near, and, uh, the thing is that I just feel, uh, Mr. Mayor, I know for a fact that there are many people out there, probably thousands, who this is going to sound kind of horrible or awful to, as some of it does to, to me, because, uh, capital improvements, um, we set it against dying survivors, so these thousands and thousands of our neighbors and friends here in, in great childhood that have hardly met their man, and I know they're trying like heck to pay their utilities and get some food for their kids. We're trying to help. I'm not getting down with the minutes to focus, because I know you can respond with, you know, this statement about it's not a new tax. The parents who you commit to, uh, are existing in the tax. But for a lot of folks, uh, I, I just don't know how comfortable they are to know what the thing is so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the audience? Just a second.
Mr. Mayor and Counselor, um, I'm excited to, to hear about, uh, this latest bond and, and these financing ideas that you have going forward. You know, having been involved in town government here in this community in the past, having gone to school for community development in another state, um, it's exciting to me to see my community taking advantage of opportunities that are out there to build our community ourselves. I think for too long, Silver City has been dependent on outside funding sources. We've looked to the federal government, we've looked to the state legislature to support us and the projects that we need as a community with external funding, and it's tremendously exciting to me to see this council and this community moving forward and finding ways to pay for the things that we need as a community ourselves. And I congratulate you for your forward thinking on that point, and I would say that regardless of whether these projects were downtown or not. That having been said, um, at least two of these projects, I think, are, are excellent uses of this money. The College Avenue Project and the Silco Theater Project both are economic development tools for our community, and although probably now it's not the best, best time to get into the specific details going forward, um, Main Street and the town, and, together with the New Mexico Economic Development Department, have been working on plans to, uh, for me to a revitalization strategy for downtown, and the Silco Theater purchase is just the first element of that overall plan. And as we see it through over these next few years, and we're talking about taking a small amount of public investment, coupling it with a larger amount of private investment to really be able to chart our own course in downtown and establish an anchor for local business, business opportunities for local citizens that do not currently exist. And so I really appreciate your support of downtown Silver City and of the Silco Theater Projects, and to the folks that are out there watching and listening and maybe feeling a little confused about what's going on, it may be, it may get a little more confusing before it's all done, because, uh, the new strategies are just beginning, but it's going to be worth it. When everything's said and done, we're going to build a community that we can be proud of and that pays for it, so, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? I want to respond a little bit, Dr. Martinez, some of the comments you made. One is the, the state of New Mexico has built a tax structure that allows the state to send money back to these local projects over many, many years, and we counted on that. And as bizarre as it may seem that we send our money to Santa Fe all year long and then we have to go out there and fight to see how much we can bring back home that is deservedly back to the local government and did not necessarily have a statewide purpose, that doesn't happen anymore. We don't have that opportunity for the last couple of years to go up and see if we can bring some money back. They haven't lowered your taxes. They haven't cut taxes to compensate for the drop in service that they've offered you. The taxes are still coming in, their state expenses are still rising, for whatever reason, they feel it's justified. But what it's forced us to do as a local government is to increase efficiencies in operations, in financing, in taxing, and how we utilize our taxing, to make sure that we're able to provide the level of service that you expect, you demand, you've become accustomed to, and at the same time have a vision to look forward and see where we want to be in the future while acknowledging who we are today. And this has been extremely challenging. We can make, you know, we could make comments about that's how Alex felt as black guy, but it's, it's, it's pretty well been that, that brutal times and having to figure out how do we go forward? What do we do with the tennis courts that we, we sent money out for? What is their value to the community? How, you know, and we have to measure those things. We have to figure out what are these priorities, and we have to do it without the state sending back what they taxed you for. And if, we don't do this with a, with a light heart or a light mind, it's, it is very We have to be the ones to set up future councils to provide capital improvements from local funds and to get on a plan that ensures that you have the quality of life that you expect from us. And people that look at our community for tourism or to retire here or to move and bring their family here, they have expectations, and we have had, I've often joked, but it's truly not funny. We have plans to plan, to plan, to plan, and bookshelf after bookshelf in this community of plans that have collected dust for years and years. And over the last few years, this council has taken those plans off, we've reevaluated them, the, working with Main Street on the, the new Main Street, um, comprehensive plan, and we're implementing them. We have the mayor's climate committee assessment. We've taken that, we've implemented those things. We're not just letting these plans that the community pays for sit on a shelf and collect dust. We're trying to implement them, we're getting some things done, and we're doing it in a, in a state where many other communities in this state cannot do it. And because of the excellent stewardship of our finances by, and it's, I mean, we really have to give credit to our staff, Mr. Brown leads the finance team as well, but we have been able to make those cuts in operations and improve our efficiencies, decrease our utility bills, that we're allowed to adjust for what the state has cut. So I do appreciate your comments, and the part about it being almost more than anybody can comprehend, believe me, when I first sat up here, uh, the first several meetings that I sat out, I wondered what in the world have I got myself into, because it takes some time to understand it, and I live and breathe it now, so it's a lot easier, and I've been known to be overly vague at times, and I'm sure you will call me out when I am. I'm probably pushing the extreme limit at the moment, so I will shut up, but I do appreciate your comments, and we will try to be as best stewards of your money as we possibly can. Thank you. Counselor Bennett.
And, and I, I want to say Dr. Martinez is out, because, you know, just like everyone else in this community, as someone who works for the State of New Mexico, the university, I've had to live within my means in a shrinking budget, um, um, as I don't get increases in pay, but as I get increases in, you know, health insurance and other costs that the state, um, in the legislature decides that they're, they're going to, you know, carry forward, um, to me as, as an employee at the state. One of the things that I'm proud of for the past three, almost three years that I've been a tax counselor, is that we have not raised taxes, that we've lived within our means, and those means, you know, everything that the mayor just explained, that we've done it by increasing those efficiencies, by finding ways to, to cut our costs by increasing services and, um, through this, um, financing projects to enhance, um, the social quality of life, that the taxes that you currently pay here within this municipality, that we collect our municipal portion, then are used to serve you within our municipality, within every possible way that we can and beyond that we can. So I'm, I'm really convinced that we can do what we can and that we're not, um, we're not creating new taxes, with, with this kind of state of financing, that we can spare payback and that we're not facing the challenges that other communities are with, um, general accounts, um, with ever-increasing needs by, um, our citizens and our residents for services that we can't meet, and we're trying to increase taxes or wanting to increase taxes to provide services, and we don't have, you know, we don't have to go there. So, and I don't want to miss out on what the mayor just said, but, um, I'm not, and I, and I, just like the mayor, it is extremely concrete to understand this. I've had to read these documents over and over and over again, and even though this is similar to what I've read before, I still read it three or four times just so that I can understand it, and I'd be happy to move and slip away with any word and discuss what we're doing and the purpose, the three projects that we've had to do with this in additional financing, that we will not do by increasing any of those taxes. So, that's my piece. Thank you.
Any comments? I've been called a, and I've been called a woman.
It's very eloquent, it's very eloquent. It's very eloquent, you know, it's very eloquent.
Any other here?
You may. What I really would like to be doing tonight is to speak for the people. I'm making a real effort to speak for the people right now. They have a voice, they have a few voices, but you know, they must know they have got to these things. I wish that more than one hundred and fifty-five people are in here, and a lot of those folks out there in the community are talking about no more taxes, no more taxes, no more taxes. And there are several organizations out there have very few people coming forward to emphasize the different sides, dimensions to, to what's going on here. And, uh, I just want to say that I'm, I'm favorable to about three quarters of the things that you are recommending, but I really, uh, believe that, uh, we need to, all of us need to think through very, very carefully this today about some of the things I said, but I know that it's really more than just a small flash. This is a very challenging, uh, project, political project, administrative project, and so forth, that you're facing. Uh, and I would just simply out here right now considering where you are. And, uh, I just want to make the point that, you know, it's not untrue what this, many people in the county have been articulating, but they have not been taking too much of a, a, uh, involvement with, and that is that we might, um, look at whether now is the time. Whether this is the time is a very important question that needs to be addressed. And, uh, yes, the capital improvements versus social services, an improvement of social services and so forth, is a very serious, um, thing to, to address. And, uh, I, I just want to reemphasize, uh, that. And so I think there's appreciation for the hard work and, uh, so forth that's been taking place. I don't know just how far and deep we're involved in it so far, uh, we've gone, it feels, it's what we're doing, it's taking it a step at a time, and I, I don't know to what extent each one of you is locked in to where all of this is going. You don't have to stand up that much.
Any other discussion? Counselor Murray.
Mr. Mayor, you know, it is, it, this is a very difficult, uh, subject, and, and it's very exhausting trying to, um, do what's right for our constituents. In many cases, I, I think, um, there are many of our citizens who look to me as, as a CTA on, on the council to, uh, make sure that we do what's fiscally right and responsible. And, uh, I have heard many arguments that, um, you know, if, if we do have tax revenues that are in, in excess of, of what we absolutely need, why don't we return it? Why don't we reduce taxes? Um, the, you know, and, and then there's, there's the counter-arguments that, um, from a business, uh, standpoint, that if, um, these taxes are already built in and people are accustomed to paying them, um, and, and gross receipts taxes being our, our major tax is a, a, um, relatively common tax, and the increments we're talking about are probably a very smart piece in, in, uh, our expenditures. But if we have those ex, um, excess revenues in a, in a time that there's opportunities to improve our economic situation in the future, that, um, should we take those opportunities and the, and our citizens who are, who are hurting financially right now, are, are, are we doing right by them to improve the economic, um, future for our town and actually improve their future as opposed to their current status? Because if, um, you looking at the opportunity of decreasing taxes or returning taxes as the state has done in the past on small scales and, and just returning a fifty dollars to a person, you know, that may help them today, and I mean really, when, when we're talking fifty dollars for a person, we're, we're really helping them for one day, versus the opportunity to, to use appropriate financing, not, not creative financing, really appropriate financing that is much more efficient than what we've seen in the past, to leverage and improve our economic future and actually give our citizens something that is, is gonna yield future benefit. I'm much more inclined to take that route, and that, that is one of the reasons, in, in my capacity and my competencies, as I read this, and, and I'm not gonna, um, try to fool anybody thinking that, that I understand this fully, but I have a, a, a pretty solid understanding of what's gonna materialize. And, and I think what's gonna materialize is economic improvement for our future that is gonna have a much stronger impact on our citizens than any, um, than any alternative uses of these, these tax dollars by virtue of whether we will refunding them or we are gonna cut taxes. That is not gonna have future impact on our citizens like what we're doing right now. Thank you, sir.
Well, today, um, our two main sources of taxes for the town, that we, we have the ability to, to, to use. One is property tax, and you can't get much lower at the amount of property tax that the town, uh, has imposed on our residents than we currently do. Uh, we have the ability to impose, uh, up to seven point six five million of property tax, uh, per thousand dollar valuation. The town, we only impose one point nine five million. The other source of revenue that the town, a major source, that the town receives is gross receipts taxes. And the other thing about using gross receipts taxes to, to finance these, these bonds is the fact that we have a, a municipality that has a population technically of ten thousand three hundred people. But we serve much, much more than two thousand people on a daily basis. And so we're not just taking, you know, when we bring in, um, tourists, when we bring in people from outside of the community, they're happy paying for the service that we are providing to our local residents and our residents, uh, uh, on a daily basis. What we're doing, what we're, is rather than cut all these taxes or to take these taxes that, that we're currently receiving, we've gone, and gone across the country, found more efficiency, we're buying our own efficiency than electrical, electric costs in many different ways. And now we're trying to work so that we can much more efficiencies than these services that we're bringing from outside of this community, the residents that are bringing from outside of this community to help for our software through the line to the future. That's what I, I, I think we're, we're doing. You know, we, we, when we look at this, we're on a short plan. We serve water to over twenty-four thousand residents, even though that raises seven thousand drinks. We serve, um, sanitation, I believe, or pretty much just inside the city middle. But in that, we've found all the people really fortunate and being much more efficient than we're able to do. The city members, the board area as well. We have a great water rate in the last two years. We've grown, um, a growth rate, we've grown, grown our amount in the last two years. But other than that, we've, we've, since two thousand nine, this whole, uh, economy crash, we have a base taxes. We've looked for a way to save, which I think Mr. Martinez was mentioning about, is, you know, we're, we're not spending extra money that we hope that we're gonna generate, that we want to more money generated. We're spending on land that we are glad to save, to set ourselves up for these, these projects. And hopefully these projects will help us in the line, like you said, in the, in the line to set us up for, um, well, well, for the future.
Thank you. Keep our comments. Thank you, Dr. Martinez. You're on for vocals to everybody.
A town that is going to have a, you're being much more deliberate about all of this. And you know, I'll say this, you know, if you heard the, the, uh, poll, the ones that passed, uh, leaving the warning to DC, people don't eat in the long run. There are a lot of different aspects of this, we need to consider.
I, I think we, we got your point. Well, I have my idea for reality, so, you know, self-appointed to represent people, and I got lessons to represent people, and we should sit down and have a debate across the table.
But trying to think of...
We, I do appreciate that, and I, and I think anytime that we're challenged to actually articulate what is our thought process and where we're going at, and when you look at many of the items that we have on our agenda as a single item, it would be foolish. But when you put them in as a whole, and you look at the entire volume of work that we do, the entire volume of work that we do in between meetings, it, it makes a lot more sense. And I do understand that that can be very difficult to, to track and to follow, but we, we tend to have these discussions occasionally that, that get very deep into, into philosophy and, and thought process and, and some of the discussions that we have to get to this point. And I, I think it is official to the public, and with that, I think we need to move forward. Is there any other discussion regarding ordinance number eleven ninety-two? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number eleven ninety-two in order of authorizing the issuance of the town of Silver City, New Mexico, grocery seats tax improvement bond.
Yeah, we need to press that eight to quarter.
Can we do that? We'll just, uh...
Do you want to read the order?
Do I need to read the whole ordinance?
I don't.
You should give it to me, what?
Just hang on, I'll go.
Okay. Sorry, pour some water. I move for approval of ordinance number eleven ninety-two in order of authorizing the issuance of the town of Silver City, New Mexico, grocery seats tax improvement revenue bond series two thousand twelve in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one million dollars for the purpose to finance acquisition and construction of certain capital improvements for the benefit of the town and its residents and to pay cost of issuance of a series two thousand twelve bond, providing that the series two thousand twelve bond will be payable and collectible from the secured, and secured by a pledge of the gross receipts tax distributed to the town pursuant to section seven dash one dash six point four NMSA nineteen seventy-eight as amended, the state shared gross receipts tax, and two, the one quarter percent municipal gross receipts tax distributed to the town pursuant to section seven dash nineteen D dash nine NMSA nineteen seventy-eight as amended in town ordinance number six seventy-one adopted August seventeenth nineteen eighty-one, providing for the disposition of the receipts derived from the fed tax proceeds, providing that certain terms of the bonds will be provided in the subsequent resolution, prescribing other details concerning the bonds and tax proceeds, including but not limited to covenants and agreements in connection therewith and the form, terms, conditions, and manner of execution of the bonds, ratifying otherwise previously taken in connection therewith, and repealing ordinance in conflict therewith.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion of state of here, I mean, the, the state of...
There's a motion, a second to approve ordinance number eleven ninety, eleven ninety-two, as a group allowed.
The connection.
With the, with a connection from the printed copy in the eleventh line from a eight to a quarter. Is there any discussion? There's a motion, a second and no further discussion to approve ordinance number eleven ninety-two, as read aloud. A, your call.
Counselor Murray?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Battleford?
Aye.
Motion, please. Thanks, everybody. Next item on the agenda is approval of resolution number two thousand twelve dash zero one, open meetings.
Mayor and Council, I'm expecting your approval of our open meeting resolution. We give us annually every first meeting in January, and it provides the location of the council meetings, the notice requirements of the meetings, um, criteria on the agenda. It's the same as we do each year, nothing, the only thing that's changed is, is the date for two thousand twelve. That's the only thing that we changed to this document from last year. It also provides information on special meetings, emergency meetings, and other meetings, closed meetings, and, um, a master review of this.
Let's move the meeting to five o'clock, you know?
Not too late.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Is there a second motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of decision number two thousand twelve dash zero one, open meeting.
Mr. Mayor, can I second that motion?
There's a motion, a second to approve, resolution number two thousand twelve zero one, open meeting. Any discussion? There's a motion, a second, no further discussion, to approve, motion number two thousand twelve is zero one, open meeting.
Counselor Battleford?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Counselor Murray?
Aye.
Motion, please. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of one member to the museum board, and can you tell me who I'm appointing?
I don't know.
We have one application, and that application was reviewed by the chair of the museum board and recommended for approval. Um, I find the applicant pretty qualified, interested, and would like to appoint Fania Munt. I hope I can push her in on that, to the museum board. Is there any objection from the council? Seeing no objection, this motion is accepted. We will continue your power of letters.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion, a second to adjourn. There's a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor, Mr. Obi, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in check.